This is a copywritten production of the Recreation Centers of Sun City Incorporated and is intended for the sole purpose of informing our recreation center members. Any duplication, copying, transmission, broadcast, or use including electronic and social media is strictly prohibited without the prior written consent from the Recreation Centers of Sun City Incorporated. Thank you for watching.
Okay, well, welcome. It's great to see all of you. Come on in, find a seat. There's plenty up here, plenty in the front. My name is Sherri Marcio. I'm one of your moderators tonight. Along with me is Steve Oakes. We are members of the Long Range Planning Committee. We have other committee members here, too. They're going to be our microphone runners. We have Linda Evenson. We have Dennis Stokely. We have Russ Toman. And we have Candy Bruggerio. Okay. We also want to thank our audiovisual staff. They're doing videotaping tonight, so this will be available on YouTube. You may have seen our first or second efforts. But I want to say thank you to Alan, and Doreen, and Teresa. And special thank you to Beth Lucas for all of our handouts and communication and things like that. Very, very helpful. Okay, I wanted to start out, I wanted to know, is this anyone's first meeting, or relatively first meeting? Oh, excellent, excellent. Let's give him a hand. I'm going to follow that up with, can you be brave enough and let me know if you're a volunteer of any kind in Sun City? Excellent, excellent. Okay. Sun City, 64 years old, founded on volunteerism as an important concept. Volunteering through committees, through RCSC, off-campus RCSC in the community for prides, our sunshine services, the hospital, many, many, many opportunities. So, thank you. Welcome to our new visitors, and thank you to our volunteers. All right, this is our third town hall, like I mentioned. We plan to do town halls periodically throughout the year as long-range planning. Our goal is to gather information and gather your input. And we've done a lot of listening the first two sessions. We keep adding just a little bit more. So if you've been to the first two, you might see just a little bit more again tonight. All right. Okay, we are the Long Range Planning Committee, creating member-to-member opportunities to collect input, community ideas and input. Today is a recap on current projects and planning for this year. It's been a particularly busy year. We wanted to share some of those things with you. Well, we're going to talk about for 30 minutes, and then we're going to open the floor to you. We're going to capture our comments for feedback later. Okay, this is a quick look at our agenda. We're going to talk about the changes that are in process. We're going to talk a little bit about the ASU and RCSC work-study summary, the strategic pyramid, which is a structure that we use for planning in long-range planning. We're going to talk about mission, vision, values real quickly, budget and finance, a five-year strategic plan, and lastly, we'll end the evening with strategic alternatives. This is, we want everyone who's here today to be heard if they want to speak. Whether you're, you're all members, okay, but whether you're also a staff person, also a board member, we want to hear from you. We're not speaking just about SAC. We're speaking about all of these topics. So, don't feel like you can't speak up if you're only hearing SAC. Please feel free to share their comment. Okay, changes in process. Transparency. Transparency can be shown in many different ways, and I think that thank you that I haven't done yet is to our board members. So if we have any board members here, thank you, thank you for a year of transparency, of improved communication, of inclusion, of building teams, of improving committees. I think it's all really, really important. We've concentrated a lot on improving our data processes. It can only get better, and we're going to continue to work on it. There's been a renewed focus on maintaining all of our facilities to high-quality standards, a pragmatic approach to helping members who are truly in need. We're concentrating on employee retention and satisfaction, and we want to practice a sense of urgency through all this. Steve, I'm going to hand it to you.
Good evening. Thank you very much for showing up here late in the day. Some of you probably have early mornings, so it says a lot about your willingness to be part of the process and involve yourselves in your community. I'm looking at probably a group here that's as big or bigger than we had yesterday, so I think that says a lot about your interest in your community. So, hand, give yourself your own applause there for being here. So, earlier in the year, you were asked to fill out a survey. Many of you did. As a matter of fact, a large number of you did. It was a surprisingly large number. It was the first survey in 20 years that was approved that could be done by residents, members of RCSC. So that's a big step forward in gaining information. We had about a 30% response rate, and if anybody knows anything about marketing surveys, that's incredible. That just doesn't normally happen. And the focus groups had 140 people in it, and that gave a lot of information back to ASU. There were three-hour working, there was a three-hour working group that also provided suggestions and offered ideas. So what we gathered was a large amount of data. Here's just a taste, if you will, real quickly. This gives you some idea that there was a summary of what activities are most frequently done by members of RCSC that filled out the survey. And to most of our surprise, walking. Okay, I see some heads saying, yes, okay, I do it, yep, so therefore, I can indicate that as something that is important to me. Well, this raises the question of where do we do the walking? And that would be Fairway, you have a walking track, and you have one also up at Marinette, but that's about where we have our walking tracks for our RCSC facilities. Otherwise, you're doing it with your dog, your friend, your spouse, in your own neighborhood. And so we haven't really figured out how to move that forward. Cardio fitness, I'll draw out your attention to just two other points. Cardio fitness and weight training, they're in the top four there, right? So, that's our fitness centers. Just to emphasize, the fitness centers are very important, get a lot of use. And water walking comes in at number three, mini golf, number five, golf itself at number six, sitting by the pool. So the reason why I think it's worth noting, they have sitting by the pool and water walking in the top eight, okay? So pools are very much used by our members. And lastly, you have a tie for pickleball and lap swimming in eighth place. Turn it back to Sherri.
Okay, next up, line of sight alignment. Long-range planning started out the year with no process to plan. Kind of shocking. We thought so, too. So we decided that we needed a way to plan. This pyramid demonstrates how long-range plan works with other entities within RCSC and with other committees. It's really a focus of moving intentionally in a forward motion and to really produce a model for continuity. So we can, we can do things smarter and more predictably year after year. We want to think and plan about the big things while we do the little things, but keep moving forward, okay? Aligning your mission, vision, and values with a strategic five-year plan and making sure that your one-year operating budget aligns with those other two pieces is a very best business practice. It's a smart way to move forward for any organization, and it will, as long as this process is followed, it's going to produce more predictable results. Mission, vision, values. That's the bottom of the pyramid. And the first thing that we did is we wanted to validate, well, what are our mission, vision, and values? And what we found out when we took a little look is that they were outdated, they were hard to find, and they really lacked inspiration for both people and planning. So between 12 and 13 versions later, we have what we're presenting tonight. We asked for input not only from the community, but from the board, from the staff, from the management, from the members. We received a lot of input. We received emails and face-to-face input, and we tried to consider everything because we felt it was important. About 120 hours were put forward, but what we ended up with is statements that were built by members, for members. Where, it's a statement that we're very proud to share, and they definitely, definitely communicate, excuse me, who we are, where we're going, and what we value. Okay, our proposed mission, who we are, I'm going to read it just in case you have trouble in the back. "To maintain a financially sustainable corporation which provides our members with a wide range of high-quality amenities, recreational opportunities, and social activities to enhance each member's sense of well-being and purpose." Our proposed vision, we started off as the original Sun City. We're still visioning, and we want to be known as a national leader of 55-plus socially active lifestyle communities. Our proposed values, what we value. Our values are in relation to things like working together and for each other, taking care of our amenities and our assets, working and planning smartly, and keeping an eye on the future. Specifically, they read this. "We are committed to making members our highest priority and giving them high-quality service. We value our friendly and welcoming community and want to pass that along to future generations. We value teamwork and each person's contribution to the community. We maintain and approve amenities, operations, and infrastructure to modern, attractive, and environmentally friendly standards. We believe data and technology should be harnessed to support health, safety, efficiency, and maintain the integrity of our decision-making processes. And we plan for the future and operate with a sense of urgency." Okay, taken together, we hope that you can find inspiration and clarity in our new statements. What do you think? Yeah? Okay, all right, good. All right, another layer of the pyramid is the budget, the annual budget. And this year, our members and our management worked together as business partners. In the past, it was a management-driven process presented to the members. But the long-range, or, I'm sorry, the finance budget and audit committee met all summer, every other week, okay? They held open meetings, they invited members as guests, frequently allowing comments and questions from the guests as they did their work. They came up with a theme, and it was facing economic realities, and they have three goals. They have expanded capital project list, we can begin to catch up on the $20 million in deferred maintenance issues and items. They want to increase the spending and repair and maintenance, prevent and maintenance plan to improve the condition of facilities and amenities. Create a plan so we don't get here again, okay? And lastly, they want to increase wages and approach market rates to reduce employee turnover. We want to keep our employees happy. November 16th, that's Thursday, we had, you have the opportunity to attend the Board of Directors meeting, they're having the second reading. If you don't choose to comment tonight, you may wish to come to the board meeting and comment. You can review the proposal on the RCSC website under the Committee Reports for Finance and Budget. It's called the 2024 Preliminary Budget. Okay, the last slide that I have right now is completing the strategy pyramid, and it's the five-year strategic plan. This is another opportunity for us to get our house in order. It's going to begin with our new general manager. He's going to develop a five-year plan for our expenses and our revenue, projecting them out for five years, then hand it over to Long Range Planning, Finance and Budget and Audit to put the polishing touches on it. The goals will be to achieve a balance of needs with resources using database decisions, be transparent and realistic with asset preservation and improvement planning, and identify and appropriately fund deferred current and future priorities. It's a work in progress. It doesn't exist today. It's going to exist shortly. It's a high priority, and it's something that we're looking forward to. I'm going to pass it back to Steve.
Okay, one thing I forgot to mention on the ASU survey is, this actually went in three stages. So you had the member survey, and then there was a comparative analysis of other communities. They called it a benchmark survey. That has been received and is getting reviewed, will be reviewed by the Long Range Planning Committee and other management. And we just are getting back now, the, we call the next gen, or I call the next gen, I think they had another name for it, but the generation that is before 55, and that information will have probably more, more analysis will get done, and we'll have that available probably at future town hall meetings. So just so you know, there's a lot of information that has been coming in, a lot more than had happened than before. And again, to Sherri's point earlier, I think this is a credit to both the board and management. So, just a little bit about the information about Sun City. Here's some key points. Over 1,000 acres of golf courses, 350,000 rounds of golf played every year, 246,000 square feet of center buildings, such as the one you're in, 70 acres of land for centers. How about a million-plus member visits to these centers every year? Lot of activity. Take a look at some statistics on the centers, okay? Some of this data, by the way, just so you know, I'm going to be leading into the Strategic Alternatives Committee information, what was learned and developed, and the recommendations. But we start with some base numbers here. You have at the top, Mountain View and Lakeview. Please note, the year, '67 and 1970. Within three years, both of those facilities were built. And by some people's standards, that's pretty old now. Six and a half acres at Mountain View, and you take a look at the other properties, only Oakmont is really smaller, and Grand, we don't have the acreage here. But Mountain View is in the smaller category of our facilities. Square footage at 16,800, use annually is 52,000 people using it. So, you could, you could see that Sundial is next, but it had a facelift, and you probably are aware that Bell and Marinette had, and Fairway have had facelifts, too. So, Strategic Alternatives Committee. Anybody heard of that here? Anybody heard enough of it here? Okay, well, maybe some people have come here because they want to hear more, and so we have a lot more to talk about in that regard. 16 members represented, activities impacted, community at large, and other committee representatives. There were 16 two-hour meetings that were held from May through October, and actually, we had one November 3rd, too. So. Opened meetings attended by other 150 Sun City members, so quite a bit of community involvement. What it involved was field trips. Field trips to look at performing arts centers, to get an idea of what has happened and what has been built elsewhere. And small group research, online competitor research, expert input, extensive idea sharing occurred by various clubs and interests. And that meant we had about 450 volunteer hours put into the research, review, and discussion process on the Strategic Alternatives Committee. By the way, just so you know what's being passed out right now, thank you very much, Beth. You deserve credit for rushing these out for us. This happens to be four, four plans. If you saw the email, if you were motivated to come here by the email that was sent out this afternoon, it said only two plans. So you're again in a two-for-deal tonight, okay? You're getting a little more than it stated. Location for the Performing Arts Center was part of the decision process. Renovation versus new building, space needed, such as water volleyball, dance, pickleball, what space is needed, where is it best located? How much money, space, effort should be allotted, and where? Balancing existing member wants and future needs. All this had to be taken into consideration. And believe me, lots of discussion occurred on all these topics. We had meeting videos, presentations, handouts, and now you're getting some of that handout material, too. So, there were 20-plus alternative proposals. Few too many for you to really use. We've now boiled this down a little bit for you and what you have. So I'll explain in what you've been handed out. If you look at the spreadsheet side rather than the plans side, the sketch side, I want to thank one particular person here tonight, Paul Higgins, for putting that together. And he took the time and effort to help us understand the comparison between one plan and another, so you can actually see what the facility might be, what facilities are there, and you'll see some commonalities that we'll talk to. We'll start with Plan M. The PAC remains at Mountain View. Now, I would like to make a statement on that, that I kind of was reminded of last meeting yesterday. The PAC remains in all cases of these plans. The Performing Arts Center is considered an important part of Sun City. All existing activities would remain at Mountain View, except tennis and Plan M. Fitness is increased in size, swim activities are increased, and the Performing Arts Center is increased. Pickleball's increased.
Hey, Steve, why is it called Plan M?
Thank you. Anybody want to, anybody take a guess on why there's Plan M, and there's Plan A, and B, and C? Yes, Doug? Very good. Doug's got it. He gets, he gets the first brownie. It's Marlene, the architect. Marlene Imersian, Imersian Associates, helped us in the SAC process in coming up what items we wanted, what amenities we wanted, and you'll see on this, in the slides here, she also provided us with some cost estimates. I'll talk more to that shortly. Thanks, Sherri. Performing Arts Center would remain at Mountain View and Plan B, as I said. However, you're going to say, well, where's the cost estimates from that? Why do I get the cost estimates from M? This is what we heard before. I'm not saying you're going to say it, but I'm trying to answer the question before it even gets asked. And that is, Plan B, A, B, C, we're not involving the architect. We only add time, contract, and allocation of money for one plan to get reviewed, and that may change, okay? There is discussion currently the board is having with the architect to come back and help us understand costs and amenities at a broader, at a broader level. 12 new indoor pickleball courts, but we estimated for just eight of those being built at $10 million. People have asked also in the past, well, how did you come up with that estimate if it wasn't from the architect? And that was based on some information that came to the board with the softball center quotes that came in. So what were the shell construction costs, base construction costs? So that's why we came up with that estimate. Fitness Center increased in size to 15,000 square feet. I believe Plan M was around 3,000 to 4,000 square feet, so substantially larger. I'm sorry? Thank you, seven. 7,000 to 15, so about double. We'll talk more about that. So you have this, I think, in front of you, this page. Architects applied, recommend, okay, what Marlene said was, this is not included site analysis, these are just where we might place items and amenities. These are recommendation level, very preliminary, but the renovated PAC, in this case, you will see, has wings added to the side of these buildings where you see here, this is really convenient to be at Mountain View to discuss this, how it indents towards the stage. Well, that would be changed with these, whoops, sorry, with these wings on the side here. So you could see it's increasing in size. You'll also see that there's this area here that is the fitness center, and it was an indoor spa, but the indoor spa goes away because you have an outdoor spa placed, oh, I'm sorry, placed right here. Okay? So you get the outdoor, the indoor spa area to increase your fitness center. And by the way, it is two stories. Just think of Fairway. Fairway, if you've been there, you have the fitness equipment on top, and you have the showers, restrooms on the bottom, right below it. So similar concept applied in Plan M. Okay, here you have covered pickleball courts. And this is my opportunity to apologize to Connie from yesterday. Connie, I see you back there. In that, I called it a soft cover. You said it was a hard cover. I went back to the video, you are correct. However, what confused me, for clarification's sake, is that later, that was at the 19-minute point of the video, and later, in the discussion, Marlene explained that the structure of that cover would not support solar panels. Consequently, it's not going to support HVAC, AC. It's not a structure with insulation, so she was only providing a cover, purely a steel cover. So it would not be, she said, it would require major upgrades for making it an indoor pickleball area. So just a point of clarification that I think we were somewhat confused on yesterday. I think that covers Plan M. Am I missing anything, anybody here on Plan M? I think, oh, I'm sorry. Number seven here, two new south pickleball courts. That would be down here, and if you haven't spent a lot of time here, if you go to the far south end past where you enter, past this area here of the former indoor spa and fitness center, there's nothing but a concrete table and a cover intended for picnicking. Never used. Don't know when it's ever been used. So the thought was, and then the SAC committee, that why not use this space? In this case, Plan M puts a couple pickleball courts there. Okay? Now, there'll probably be some comments as to, from pickleball about that. All right, moving along, any other, any questions? I was going to, if you would, hold your questions until I'm done. I'm sure there'll be plenty. I'm going to try to speed this up a little bit. I think I can, because there's similarities, as I said. And keep in mind, mini golf stays, okay? In almost all, in all these plans. So that simplifies the understanding right away. The pool, as you see it, as you know it, stays. Will it be refurbished, or will it be a surface refinishing or something like that? That's an operational issue that may be taken care of, but two things that you should know, in all these plans, all of what SAC has done and thought about, is the pool stays, and the mini golf stays so far. So Plan A is different in that it goes big on pickleball courts, as you could see here. 12 would be indoor HVAC-covered courts, and eight would be outdoor pickleball courts. Also, what's very different here is the PAC is moved to a new location. All right? I know this causes some emotional thought process here. The PAC would be maybe at Lakeview, is one suggestion. at Lakeview, is one suggestion. All right? And also, you'll see up here, this orange area is the fitness area, and that's expanded from the 7,000 to 7,500 on top, because if you remember where the pickleball courts were put out here in the picnics area, you expand that all the way out. What this provides is an opportunity to have a glass wall here overlooking on the second story to the pool area, and on this side, the south side, window area looking towards the golf course, which is kind of what a lot of fitness centers are trying to do, is open up the viewing, the lighting, and make for better viewing. We kind of have some of this, if you notice, at Bell. If you've been in the fitness center at Bell, you have big windows looking out to the pool. Am I missing anything? Oh, this one, let's see. There was a sports pool on Plan M, I forgot to mention, but no sports pool on Plan A. Plan B. This one shows that there's 12 courts indoor possible. Four would be where the current four courts are, but now covered. Eight indoor courts here in the tennis court area. Fitness Center remains the same as shown in Plan A. The spa, oh, by the way, in all four plans, I forgot that, the outdoor spa is in all four plans. So what did I say? Mini golf, pool, and outdoor spa. Now add that to all four plans are recommended by SAC. Let's go to Plan C, so we can get through some of this and get to questions. In this plan, we remove the indoor, or we remove the lawn bowling area. So let me back up on that. Lawn bowling is in the first three plans, it remains, but not in Plan C. Plan C has the indoor pickleball courts in the area of lawn bowling, but six outdoor courts are put in the area of the tennis courts now, plus patio to the east side of those pickleball courts. What remains are the seven courts that are there now. And again, this outdoor spa added, a lobby staff area that's more secure than we have now, and fitness locker room set up as shown before. Top, bottom levels, as described, but larger than Plan M. All right.
And what about the Performing Arts Center in this plan?
Yeah, that, that remains. That is right here. It has
No, locations?
That is subject to further review as to how it can be changed, and that's subject to some more discussion. There've been, in SAC, we talked about retractable rollout-type seating that was cushioned, that was riser, so you would actually have very much the same effect of permanent seating, but then you could maintain a floor structure for other activities here. So that is what was thought about for Plan B and C, was a more multipurpose type use of this, this building. Okay? So we're going to go into the open comments, and in this, just like to ask you, and we have, as Sheri pointed out, we have four people willing to move around the room, and if you just raise your hand, we'd like you to make your comments brief. We will have someone that will time them, because just as in the member exchanges, we want to be respectful of other people being able to have their chance of the microphone, give their comment, their thoughts. Politeness and respectfulness is what we, respectful communication is what we're all about here in Sun City. So please keep that in mind. And we'd like to have everybody get a chance to speak once before we have people speak a second time. Okay? Doesn't mean we don't want you speaking twice. It's just we'd like to make sure everybody gets their chance first, and then we could come back to you. All right?
One, one last point. When you speak into the microphone, just hold it right up to your lips and speak into it. They're all on.
Yeah, sometime, if I, see what happens if I hold it down here versus up here, okay? All right, we will go to that later. All right, we'll open it up to, this is a member-to-member exchange, so member-to-member discussion.
Hi.
We have one back here first.
My name's Pete Annett. I'm looking at, at the plans that you've got here, and I'm just wondering, from the first meeting I went to and the SAC meeting that we had, there was only two plans voted on, and you have four plans here. Why is there four plans and only two plans were recommended from the committee to go to the board?
Thank you. That was a question from yesterday also. There was not a consensus. There was very close voting. It was determined that what the board was looking for was consensus, and in the absence of consensus, we're exposing the members to the recommendations that were provided.
Define consensus.
You need to, you need to have
So what you're telling me
A whole group.
What you're telling me is the board didn't like what we recommended, so they're just picking out whatever plan they want.
No, I did not say that, sir.
I, I believe you are. Here's a position that we're in. How many years have we been talking about Mountain View? 10 or better? One of the reasons, and that, that we keep talking about it, is because each board that gets in, they get two, three plans, and then four or five, and the next thing you know, it builds and builds and builds, and they don't make a decision. Right now, you've got a mini golf out there that is terrible, and you've got other areas in Sun City that are the same way, because the board is holding everything up for ransom for this Mountain View project.
I understand your anxiety. I think we, a lot of us have that.
Okay, so, and the second thing, you appraised the committee, working for over 400 hours to come up with a plan, and then turn around and vote on the plan, and then you disregard it completely.
I don't think that's the way it was viewed, but that's your view, I understand.
No, it's not my view. It's a lot of people's view. We need, we need the board to make a decision. I agree. The bottom line is, when you put a committee together, you take their recommendation, and then you go with it. It's simple. You don't override the committee.
Okay, Sheri suggested that we just recap that when the voting occurred on the plans, that there was either 7-7 vote or an 8-6. So there wasn't a consensus based on the voting. It was very close. Just, just information for you.
But the rules said
Please, 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 please. We'll get back. I'm just
No, I've got it. The bottom line on that one is, put it back to the committee. Don't make the decision on your own.
Sir, can you make the decision?
The board did.
Oh, the board did.
Summon the board members.
Here, Kat.
What the members of this community have asked for, may I speak, please? What the members of this community have asked for repeatedly is transparency. Yeah, Mr. Swenson, go ahead and laugh, but this is the truth of the matter. One group took the opportunity to shout down another group and insist that their alternative not be considered, when the truth and reality for the people in this community, they deserve to know what everybody thought. And so that is why all of the options are being presented to you, so that you know exactly what happened at the SAC committee, and you're aware of what everybody went through to bring you what charts were bringing you today. But in the final analysis, it isn't going to look like A, or B, or C, or M, because we're going to have to turn to an architect, engineer, to help us conclude exactly what we can put on this 6.5 acre lot. And it's going to have to include room for drainage, which is going to take some territory. I won't belabor you with all the things that have to happen to make a building happen, but it's not as easy as here's four charts and we're going to pick one. We're going to take apart from all of them, to be honest with you, I'm sure by the time is done. And when an architect, engineer tells us exactly what we can do with the $27.3 million that we have to spend on this project. And nobody wants this project done more than your board. You have waited a very long time. But we're not here tonight to fight with each other and to offer rebuttals. Hopefully, we're here tonight to hear what we can offer to you, the members of our community. Thank you.
Okay, next. New person.
Go ahead, right here, up front, up front.
First gentleman echoed my sentiments exactly. How long can we discuss this thing? Does a committee, can a committee make a, make a recommendation and have it accepted? We've been talking about this for 10 years. We had it all set once, a long time ago. I'd just like to see something done before my demise. Or at least some plan to put into, to process, so I can see what's going to happen for future generations. That's all.
Understood. Tonight and our town hall next week are our last two opportunities to get more community input on this, and then
We can have community input forever and ever and ever.
But this is the process that was decided.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Our runners need to get by people.
Linda, can you, you have people over here, Linda?
Josie Shears, 145008. My question goes back to the committee, and then what I've heard in some of the meetings, about having to have a site engineer make a decision, and I think Marlene said that that was the next step, that we needed to have a site engineer to figure out exactly what could fit on Mountain View's property to make this work. So my question is, is how much more time and money are we going to spend with architects drawing up plans when we still need that site engineer done to see if any of these buildings are even feasible to rebuild on, or if they're going to have to be tore down, because that's going to make a lot of difference in whatever the, the final outcome's going to be. And so I'm just wondering, how long is it before we hire, or what are the procedures to hire this site engineer to find out exactly what can be done on this property before we keep spending money on architects? It was also brought up that we had that last plan that got voted down, the $47 million plan. Did we ever find their site engineering, because they had start dates set on that? So there should be somewhere a site engineering plan that's already been done that can maybe speed this process up.
That question's been asked, but we don't have a plan on that.
Russ, Russ in the back? Russ in the back here, I have a hand up.
Okay, Lana Williams, 159495. Okay, we, we need to look at everything that could benefit Sun City at Mountain View. The cost of all improvements, and what we might fit into the fitness center. We need to focus on the PAC at Mountain View. That should be our priority. We need to see what type of renovations we can expect there, and make sure they get taken care of first. They have waited longer than anyone here, and to put this entire project on hold, because the pickleball club is not getting what they're, what they want is not fair. If they have to wait for Lakeview, how many more years will they have to wait for a PAC? Look how long it's taken just to come up with this idea to renovate this, and they do not want to wait another 10 years or so. Okay, on what that gentleman said, you know, I'm on the SAC, and when you have board members on the SAC that is giving their vote, they are voting, and they are just, their only concern is getting that pickleball. So you can see by these, one of the plans is to totally eliminate lawn bowling. There were presidents of two lawn bowling clubs at the meeting. Both presidents said they do not want to lose lawn bowling here. Okay? I know it didn't fall on deaf ears, because I was there. A lot of you were there. Okay? So it's like, this entire project has come down to pickleball players being greedy, and that's it. You can take that to the bank.
On the discussion of lawn bowling, since it's been brought up, I'll show you a chart on the usage rate, or I'm sorry, club membership. You'll see how in 2011 is the green, and it goes down to a lower number of club membership in 2022. So we take into consideration, or have taken into consideration on SAC, what's going on in the usage and the club membership. It's important for us to know the trend, so we can plan what is going to be needed in the future. Just a point, since Lana brought up lawn bowling.
Do you have the app for pickleball?
Yeah, you have that for pickleball?
Since you asked. So this is the 2011 in green, and this is your, the current estimated membership at about a little over 1,100.
I thought current estimate was the red or orange or whatever.
Oh, that's, that's 20, that's 20, that's 2022.
Oh, okay.
2022.
That's all right.
The red is 2022. This is projected for 2023.
What about the PAC?
Okay, thank you. You guys are feeding all the charts here with the questions, so Let's see, that's, okay, this one, that's not it. Okay, here we go. On the left, you have players' audience attendance for the entire season, and so the far left is 2016, 2017, and then you had in the 2017, 2018, and 18, 19, you had about 5,000, roughly 5,000 attendance in the entire season. Then in 2019, 2020, dropped down to about 3,000, down to about 2,000. That's COVID. Yep, thank you. You're right. That's COVID. Not to be expected to be a good year for a lot of things, and we'll see that same, same thing appear elsewhere. But here in 2022, 2023, we're just below 3,000 attendees. If we look at, no, this is a season. This is as per, the entire season.
Annual?
This is annual, yeah.
$5,000 for 5,000?
Okay, let, let's wait until you have a chance for the microphone, please. Okay? Okay, so let's, let's look here at the next one. Players' average audience per show. This has descended from the period of 17, 18, 18, 19, down to as of this year, 2023, 2024 is really estimated at about 140 average per show. Now, what, what should that bring up in our minds? I should ask the question of, how many I should ask the question of how many seats do we need? Because how many seats affects the cost? Right? Somebody just mentioned the cost at 13.1 million for the Plan M. Plan M being the renovated version here at the facility you're at right now. So the question has to be asked, that was 350 seats. 350 seats here as opposed to average attendance at about 140.
And just to give you a reference point, right now, there's about 120 people here.
120.
Right now.
Thank, thanks for the reference.
That's a number.
Okay, let's, let's, let me stop there and let's go to the hands that are raising. Keep it for hands raising. Yes, Russ, you got someone there? What? Okay.
Hello, I'm Chris Light and my number is irrelevant, so I don't know why I need to share that with everyone. I have two questions, but I'll try to, to hold it to one. And of course, it might stir people up. But A, we are all very territorial animals and we are blessed, I think, in Phase One to have three rec centers within five minutes of each other. But do we really need three pickleball, or sorry, that was scary. Yeah, really. Three lawn bowling when they're not even used every day at every site? I think, you know, the ability for turnover and utilization, I know there are separate clubs. There's a lot of duplication in this community that can be very expensive and take up a lot of, of space. But I think that if we look at making the best use of the space within a geographic area, putting a arts center at the far south end where people don't ever cross grand, to me, is not the best use. Get offices out of Lakeview and turn Lakeview into the central core, just like Sundial is and Bell. Because we go there. Not going to go to Marinette, but you know, I just, it's silly to me to have so much overlapping qualities or programs within a very short geographic distance. And I'll just slip my second question really easily. Where else is there tennis that there would be zero down here? Because there's none at Fairway and there's none at Oakmont, correct?
There's, there's 10 courts at Bell. I'm sorry, 12 was it? 10, 10, yeah, okay. No, at Bell, she said, you asked about tennis courts.
I just asked where else it is if you're going to wipe it out completely.
Bell and Lakeview, Lakeview would need some resurfacing.
Okay, so it'd be eliminated on the south side. Southsiders would not have big rackets. Okay.
Okay, we have one back there.
I don't really have a question. I have a couple of comments. First of all, I take exception when the committee spent so much time, they came up with two plans and now we're looking at four. So that's just my point. Yes, I'm a lawn bowler and yes, I'm supporting lawn bowls and I support pickleball and everyone else here. But what I would say to the pickleball players, when you get older and your knees are shot, you're probably going to want some other sport. I mean, trust me, lawn bowling accommodates a lot of people, whether you've got a bad back, whether you can't bend over, whether you've got knees. It's the kind of sport that you can get good exercise and yet you can still do it. We've got people in our lawn bowling club, they're 80, 85 years old, and they're still able to do that. How many pickleball players do you have that are in their late 80s? Three over 90? Yeah, well, I got a 97-year-old person on my 10-pin bowling team, but there's only one, you know? So again, I would like to see lawn bowls maintained if at all possible. You say that the courts are not used all the time. Well, I live at the end of a block away and the pickleball's not used all the time either. I mean, it's not like people come over there and practice, two or three people, you have the days that you play pickleball. I would like to see everybody accommodated. Add some cornhole, add some table tennis, and make this a sports center that everybody would like to come to.
Yeah, Linda, you got one there?
Becky Papa, it's 137656. Now, her little comment will lead into what I have to say. I do belong to many clubs in Sun City and I'm not even going to name them, but everybody has their own little niche and what they love. But exactly what she said, as we age, and one of the reasons I came here, is you can stay active and you have the facilities when you get older to rehab. Knees are going to go bad. Hips are going to go bad. Backs are going to go bad. The pool here and the accessibility to it, I understand everybody wants their own little club and courts and all this, but the wow factor isn't necessarily what you need. It's the functionality and the accessibility. I had an accident three years ago. Didn't plan on it. Nobody plans on accidents, but I didn't walk for two full years. And when I was able, it had to be on a walker, couldn't be in a wheelchair. These ramps going down to the pool, that's another accident waiting to happen. They need to be accessible. We need to keep the pools where they're deep enough to do rehabs. These are things that affect all of Sun City members, every single one. And I know there's older people that yell and scream that they have to pay the fees and don't use the facilities, but guess what? If they don't, that's their fault. They're available and that's half why we're in Sun City, to make it accessible and available for everybody as they age. You know, not necessarily what's popular right now, but as you age.
Hi, Diana Alberts. Oh. Okay.
No, I'm, hi, I'm Jane Trotta and I'm new. You can tell by my number, 168599 or something like that. I remember something from earlier in the speech with these guys were talking about it is important for us to be a leader in these 55-plus communities. And let's face it, you know, we're here, we're all getting older, but there's people in their 40s that are looking to move here. And we know people that are looking to move here and the pickleball is where it's going to be. I mean, you have a hockey stick graph in usage, in interest in pickleball in the United States. And these are people that are younger than us. But we need these people to be interested in coming to Sun City to keep Sun City as vibrant as it is. I'm not personally against improving everything here, but there needs to be some kind of increase in pickleball courts to stay level with what the increase with the people are coming up in the United States. That's, that's all we're asking for. You know, we're not asking for indoor air-conditioned pickleboard, you know, ball courts all the time. We just need more pickleball courts because it does get crowded at Marinette. It's very difficult and we need more under-the-roof pickleball courts. But you know, a 300-seat auditorium is good too, you know? Lawn bowling is great. I agree. People need activities and we need to improve everything that we're doing, but we have to stay with the times.
I agree, I've been listening to everyone's comments. Everybody has a good comment, a strong comment. But being a nurse for 46 years, people do get older. You have degeneration of the spine, degeneration of the joints, hip and knees. I understand about pickleball. It's good to keep active. That's the most important thing, is mobility, mobility. But when you have a catastrophic illness, and that's why maybe people couldn't, couldn't attend theater because you had COVID, there's also situations where people are afraid of COVID, so they stay away from large crowds. So you have to take everything in and understand everything. But I know we need more facilities that will cater to the older people who cannot do a lot of physical activities, aging process, degeneration. We only have one physical therapy pool and that's at Sundial.
That's a three-foot pool.
The little pool? Well, I see the Hoyer lift. Okay, there's no other Hoyer, there's no other pool with the Hoyer lift. Okay? Oakmont? I go to Oakmont for Aqua Fitness. I mean, I don't see it. Fairway? Okay. I stand corrected. I'm in Aqua Fitness and the reason I travel all around is because we don't have just one pool. We have to use all the pools. We cannot use the pools at Bell and Lakeview. That's what people are going to need to understand. We can't have a pickleball court at every recreation center. Okay?
That was nuts. That was not in the recommendations.
Okay, there's two. But I'm just naming that one because it seems like everybody wants pickleball. But people need to understand, you have to drive to the areas that support that particular sport. That's all I have to say.
Okay, I have a comment back here in the back.
Okay, go ahead, Russ.
All right, Russ has got it.
Yeah, I'm Ken Codgermither. I am the next gen here. I'm in my 50s. I moved here for a reason. I want variety. I just don't want pickleball. I just don't want lawn bowling. I want it all. It doesn't make sense that you guys are fighting over eight pickleball courts or 12 pickleball courts or have it all. Why not? That's what the next gen's going to have. That's what they want. They want a variety. I moved here for a variety. I didn't move here for fighting. We, we moved here two and a half years ago, walked into this area. Hey, yeah, we're going to have this project up and running. Almost three years later, we're still here. I mean, you talk about the next generation? I'm it. I'm 58. I'm the next generation. You're not talking about 40-year-olds. They got 15 years to go. Pickleball might not even be around in 15 years. You don't know. But the next generation, they want a variety of things to do. Plain and simple.
Yeah, go ahead, back there, Linda.
Hi, Jeff Henderson, 139680. I want to go back to the very beginning with what the gentleman said because it's very true what he said, that there were originally two and now there are four. It's very clear why that is. And if any of you have looked on YouTube, I, the other night, watched every single meeting that's been posted on YouTube about all these subjects. Has anyone else done that? They are all smaller versions of exactly what's happening here. And that's why it takes them so long. That's why their job is so hard because everyone, all they care about is themselves. I mean, if we did everything everyone wanted, we'd build a hospital, we'd build, this isn't Beverly Hills. Every single committee meeting is the same. That same woman's been talking about pickle, this isn't about pickleball. The numbers just say it's about pickleball. This woman at every other meeting is saying how she hates pickleball. One of the board members is writing an open letter in the Daily Independent, basically disparaging two of the board, one of the board members, Karen, and the president of pickleball, saying, "Don't listen to what they say." And they're on the board together. So as dysfunctional as this is, and there's no solution to this, just so everyone knows, this will go on forever if it keeps going like this. The board is dysfunctional. So it's never going to be easy and they're going to keep, you're right, it's going to keep going in circles. The surveys, to me, I'm sorry, I used to be in that business, throw them out. It's like a poll, it's like a poll. Throw them out. Every time I go to a building, I put in my card and they ask me what I'm there for. Why do we do that? What is it? And that PowerPoint, and everyone loves to put up a PowerPoint, says the decision's going to be based on what? Data. What, how many sources of data do we have? Not opinions, not who hates pickleball, who hates lawn bowling, who hates golfing, who hates this, who should be out in the summer in the heat? How many sources of data do we have? Real, live data? How many? One. Follow the data and stop all this nonsense. This is ridic, that's the only verifiable, non-objectionable source of information we have. There's a lady on the board, Karen, I don't want to, this has done a ton of work on all the numbers and I watched the meeting and it's a strategic meeting when she would try and bring up numbers, which is just a reflection of what we do. That's all it is. They basically told her, "We don't want to go down rabbit holes." I watched the meeting. Watch it on YouTube. Your jaw will drop. These people should not be responsible for spending this kind of money. Trust me. There's two of them there who did, she's the smartest one in the board and everyone's attacking her because they think she wants to play pickleball. He wrote an open letter in the newspaper about a fellow board member saying, "She's an advanced pickleball player, so that's why she wants pickleball." Follow the numbers. Everything else is a waste of time. It doesn't work.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Karen Pig and it's 11, no, 105112. And my question is, has nothing to do with pickleball or any of that. What constitute that you put off since it's been 10 years that this has been planning to redo Mountain View? Want constitutes that it gets, keeps getting passed back?
Okay, so maybe a little history on that would help answer the question. If everybody heard, she's saying, why are you, why are, as it keep getting pushed back? Okay. In this particular year, the Plan B or Plan Option Two, I guess it was, that was on the prior board's decision to go forward with, was considered to be inappropriate for the members of Sun City. It had removed pickleball. It had removed lawn bowling. It had removed mini golf also? So it took away much of what we've talked about people wanting. So Option Two was halted by the board earlier in the year for the sake of coming up with better alternatives, which to that point, Strategic Alternatives Committee, alternatives, that's plural. Okay, so just keep in mind, that's what we were trying to do, is move beyond what was considered a bad plan for the community to something that would be better with coming up with more alternatives.
But that's been going on for 10 years.
Yeah, I hear you. She says, she just said, "That's been going on for 10 years." And I, I understand. I don't blame anybody for feeling frustrated by it. I hear you.
Hi, my name is Anita Borski, 136312. I'm here to speak as a SAC member. We all survived the long, hard summer and here we are. I want to speak about the Performing Arts Center and make something perfectly clear. A gentleman mentioned over there, we're going to spend $13 million for, I think your chart said 5,000 people. It's not quite right. The Performing Arts Center includes 11 different performing art groups, not just the players. The players are one minority. We have the tap dancers that are interested. The Sun City Poms are interested. We could have board meetings there. We could have comedians come in. We have movies there. At one time, we figured it was around 240 nights a days a year that it would be used. And if all else fails, it could be a revenue stream. So when you're talking about the Performing Arts Center, it's not just the players. Yes, they've had some bad years and they're trying hard, but if anybody's ever come here for a play or a movie, your limit, like probably now, is an hour in these chairs and you want out. If we put in some decent furniture in here and some decent comfortable chairs, their attendance will go up. They had 140 one night and we're talking about the They had 140 one night, and we're talking about a 300, 350-seat theater. That could easily double in one program if we had decent chairs. So be careful when you're talking about Performing Arts Center. Thank you.
Yeah, Dennis, you have someone up here in front? Thank you. Go ahead, Gloria.
Gloria Beck, 19851. One little AMP is saying, "Don't do this," and the other little AMP is overruling it, so here I go. I am, I am an advocate of performing arts. I volunteer at three theaters, so obviously I love the arts. I also love pickleball. I, okay, I also love pickleball. Once upon a time, they let us use this to learn how to play pickleball in the summertime, and having an air-conditioned place to learn was fabulous, because I live here all summer long, and you cannot play in the summer. It is too hot, unless you are out there at 5:30 or 6 o'clock in the morning, or fairly late at night. But the main thing I want to say, so we do have a need for those pickleball courts. Pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in America. You can, it's not these statistics, it's everywhere. It's the world. It's all over the place. I go to Spain and they're playing pickleball there, so it's not just the United States. But the other thing I wanted to say was, the, I think they're forgetting Dell Webb's vision for Sun City. I've lived here for 20 years. We moved here, I'm from Maine. We moved here because I hate Florida. It's just hot, humid, buggy, snakey, everything. I just don't like Florida. My sister-in-law lived here. We came to visit three times, and my husband said, "What do you think about moving to Arizona? Five-year plan." We moved it up to a three-year plan. However, Dell Webb did not build this to be a nursing home. He built this to be an active community, not for people to come and just be sick or rehab. He built it for an active community. That's why it was the first one in the country, and we still continue to be one of the best. We may not be the biggest, but we are one of the best.
So, you know, I guess I'm kind of new to this. This is my second meeting. I haven't followed a lot because I'm still working. But we have to remember that, at one time, tennis represented what pickleball is now, okay? So, I mean, you know, it's going to change, and there's going to be something new that is new than pickleball. Same thing with golf. The round of golf is at 30%. You know, many of us are, you know, grew up being athletic, played a lot of sports, women and the guys, and you have a lot of interest, a lot of interest in trying to do different things. You know, so I'll just throw out some things. I get in her ear all the time. She's more in tune watching all this online and coming to meetings. But, you know, why does all of our rec centers have to be all things to all people? But keeping that in mind, if we start moving them around now, the cost is going to go through the roof. All right? And again, okay, so if we put the theater here, keep it here, and redo it, you know, are the people in Phase Three going to want to drive down here? I don't know. Maybe, maybe if the seats are nice and there's good acts coming in, but there are people that don't want that. I've heard, you know, they enjoy being across the street and being able to walk to the rec center that's near them. But, you know, do we have to have pickleball at every rec center? Do we need lawn bowling at every rec center? Do we need mini golf at every rec center? And do we need to maintain all these things once we have them in place? We do. Mini golf, since we moved here in 2015, I mean, this carpet out here, I mean, has fallen apart in many places. We've gone up to Bell and played mini golf. We, you know, we're starting to try lawn bowling, going to try pickleball. I'm a golfer, and it's the same thing with golf. Rounds are down to 30%, the number, I mean, pretty low, I mean, the number of rounds of golf. I mean, three, yeah, but, so we, so we have, we have nine golf courses. Do we need that many golf courses? No, we can't get rid of them because that was the foundation. But, boy, if they were standalone business, somebody'd be going out of business running that golf course. So, you know, but, but we can't keep kicking the can down the road. You know, we, we put another three, four, five years into this thing. We know what inflation's already doing. It's going to be, it's going to be out of sight. A decision on something has to be made, and made fairly quickly, and live with it.
Thank you, sir.
Sir? Sir? Here.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Joe Klupel, and I'm 163713, and I'm a newbie. I've just been here about a year. And one of the things I noticed is that everything is so close together. I drove by Lakeview, Grand, Oakmont, was it Fairview, and now Mountain View. It took me 11 minutes to get here. I think it is much, much, much better to have high-quality, in case of pickleball, maybe air-conditioned, facilities, have excellent facilities at two or three places in our, what, eight or nine rec centers. Instead of trying to duplicate everything everywhere you can, have them high-quality so they can be used throughout the hot summer months, et cetera. And I have been in theater for quite a while, and this is a nice little room, but the sound is absolutely lousy, in my opinion. I see that you tried to repair it with the squares and the flags, and it's still not working. So when you do build a theater, whether it's here, Lakeview, or Bell, make sure it's a good, quality theater. And like the lady over there said, if you have comfortable theater seats and you have enough room, I think you will get a lot more than 350 people out of the 40-some-thousand I think we have living here. So, and I know democracy is messy. All of us like to have our own thing, but the big thing we've got to do is compromise. Let's have quality at a few places and do a little bit of driving. I have to go and help a lady drive who's lost some of her vision. She can't drive anymore, so I don't know if she'd like to go to someplace close so she could go by herself. But maybe we can all chip in and help those people go to something a little bit further away.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tom Swinson, 135906. I am president of the Players Club. Number one, I want to take a few responses to people. Guess who's compromised at SAC over and over and over and over again? Players and the arts community. We were expecting a brand-new 450-seat theater with no, with all ramps, no steps, so we, the old people could get in and sit down, with state-of-the-art electronics, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Now, we have been pared down to a renovation of this sick building. We compromised on that. We have reluctantly compromised the 350 seats when we used to have 500 in here at one point. So we know we can fill 500 seats, but we compromised. And we compromised on this seating, which bothers me more than anything, not as a player, but as a member of a community of people who have trouble getting around. So, secondly, guess who has, we talk about multiple facilities, we don't have to have everything, guess what? There's only one theater in this town. And once they tear this building down or renovate it, we're out on the streets. All right? So everybody else who says, "Ooh, we got to have more here, here," well, there's only one theater. Number two, this process, Steve, you've been disingenuous in my perception. The SAC committee created their own rules, and the rule was, whatever got voted on would be presented at the town halls. Now, when you say "we" decided, it wasn't SAC. So I think, in the spirit of transparency, I'd like to know who this "we" is that made all these decisions to change the town hall formats and plans. You should also say upfront that you proposed A, B, and C. So if some of the comments Steve is making is not a little bit strange, it could be because he has a skin in the game. Multipurpose room, that is what was rejected, and Steve, that's another thing you said. Oh, we talk, we're talking about a multipurpose room. No. The SAC rejected that. Better for worse. So that was not a SAC decision. That was your decision to re-enter it into the discussion. Parking. We have to face the parking problem. Once you enclose a building or triple its size like the fitness center, you've got to have parking for all those spaces. And Steve keeps thinking that we're going to magically get the zoning commission to give us a buy on that. We have no indication of that, no history of that. My last comment, my last comment.
Okay.
Oh, come on, after everyone else spoke for hours?
We're talking about being disingenuous and brief and kind, and, and there's no reason to pick on anyone, okay?
Well, there is a reason.
No, there's not. No, there's not.
There's a clear reason.
No, there's not.
Because...
Please, please give us your last comment.
My last comment is...
Thank you.
Pickleball's been around for 50 years, theater about 5,000. Thank you.
Thank you.
And maybe I'll, maybe I'll just respond in, in one regard, and that is that I happen to be on the Long Range Planning Committee as a committee member. I am part of those volunteer hours that you have seen, and I was nominated to be on the SAC committee as a representative for long-range planning. That's why I'm here, trying to help others understand what has been discussed. I realize that people want to label certain people as being partial and having skin in the game. Quite honestly, I'm doing my very best to be considerate of all of Sun City.
Thank you, Steve.
Oh, I just, Lorella Caulfield, I don't know my number. We've only been here a couple of years. We're snowbirds. I'm here for Mountain View, which I think a lot of you are. I look at the plans, I, I think there's enough for everyone, the theater. I liked the, a couple more pickleballs, keep the lawn bowling, expand. I think putting two pickleball courts off by themselves, it'd be more beneficial to expand, you know, the, the exercise area. I like having something close by. I want to know my neighbors. I like having it convenient. I'm more likely to go, and going to all these activities, I like getting to meet everyone. And the only other thing I would, I agree with you about the pool, I'm surprised they're not doing more with a pool here, as far as, I've been starting to swim laps, and there's only two lanes, you know, two hours a day, and other people, which they should have the ability, they're in the lanes because it's deeper to walk. So I guess I would ask that maybe they consider more for the pool, maybe part lap, part, I don't know, some have the winding river. There's a lot of decking there that's not used. So to me, there's, then there'd be a lot for everyone in this neighborhood that'd be good for everyone, so.
Maybe I could address your pool issue there a little bit.
Oh, okay.
The committee did look at the sports pool, which was for volleyball and water volleyball. Okay? And so in Plan M, you will see that Plan M does have a sports pool there. If I go back, if I go back to that for you. Here, you'll see that over in this area, sports pool is placed. Now, there's also area back here that it could be placed, where exactly, as Marlene said, those details can be worked out later. Okay? But the water volleyball president made it very clear to the Strategic Alternatives Committee that they were happy at Oakmont and had no need of a water volleyball pool at Mountain View. So in Plans A, B, and C, their sports pool is not there because of that comment.
I just wondered about your walking, your lap, like other of those staff. Fairway, where people don't want to just do the walking.
Yeah, you're saying that there's walking ability in Mountain View, but because of the lanes, it's difficult?
Well, I think there's enough that they're, you're going to, we're in it. Fairway has a walking pool?
I don't want to, I'm not, I'm, 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 But if we don't know what we are allowed and what they can put in here, why are we discussing anything?
Up front here. Thank you, Linda.
Hi. My name is Jeannie Smith. My number is 867-5309. No, that's Jenny's number. Mine is something like 16, I don't know, 168598 or something like that. I'm new here, and I'm going to take this a little different direction, okay? I've been attending some meetings and all that kind of stuff. I am a pickleball player. I came here because I met some pickleball players from this location. And I played here last year while I was a snowbird somewhere else, and I paid my dues every time I'd come. We ended up buying in Phase 3 and fell in love with the Marionette Courts under the cover, okay? So I'm going to put that out there. But what I've observed in the last, I don't know, six weeks that I've been here, is there seems to be a lack of trust that goes way back. And I think, can we get a consensus on that? Does that sound right? Okay? So my thing is, it sounds like none of the groups are going to get exactly what they really want, their ideal. I've heard there's not enough space for the pickleball, which people know need to be expanded, all right? So if not now, when? Because the theater people, it sounds like they've been screwed over for years, okay? The pickleball people don't want to be in that same position. So I was encouraged when I saw the one-year plan, five-year plan. So if not now, when? And how can the new board, because we're going to elect a new board, how can the new board that's working on transparency, which sounds like they're doing a better job of, how can they rebuild that trust in this community? Because that seems to be severely lacking here. That's what I want. I see some board members here, some potential board members, and I just hope they keep that in mind when they get elected and when this board, SAC, whatever you call it, is moving forward, okay? So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Go ahead, go ahead there.
I just wanted to point out a couple of things that were mentioned here by other people and to kind of put it more into perspective. We go to a lot of the different rec centers, different activities, different places. Our local, what I would call our rec center, is the Sundial. And we probably go there the least of all the other places that we go to. It's 7.1 miles from Mountain View to Marionette. That's the whole distance, from all the way at the top to all the way at the bottom. That's not a long distance to go, to go to a rec center. I've been to Marionette, I've been to Mountain View, I've been to the Sun Bowl. You know, we do all these different activities in all these different places. It doesn't have to be in your back door. We come here to the Performing Arts Center. We wish the seats were nicer. We wish the acoustics were better. You know, having a multipurpose floor is not the best thing for a Performing Arts Center. You should have carpeting so that the sound isn't bouncing around like it does in here. You know, there's all these different things that, yeah, it would be really nice to make this a multipurpose kind of thing, or maybe let them play pickleball here in the summertime or something. But it doesn't work for the other things that this facility is being used for. The other thing I wanted to say was that I like the idea of the numbers-driven comment, the actual number of people who show up to participate in a particular activity. You know, one of the clubs I belong to has 600 members. But 600 members don't show up every day. 600 members don't show up every week. You know, they have a lot of numbers, but they're not using the facility all the time. So taking into consideration the number of people who actually show up to participate every day or show up to participate once a week tells a lot more about their usage than just to say, "Well, we had 140 people here Saturday night, but that was it." You know, those 140 people that don't show up the rest of the month.
Hello. My name is Mark Ward. I live not far away, 159449. And the way I understand it, this has been going on plus or minus 10 years. I'm 70. If it continues the way it's going, I'll be 80, and I won't care anymore. Leaders need to lead. How many people are on the board?
Nine.
Nine. We have three new people coming on the board in December, correct? Four. So I had 33 and a third in there, but so roughly 40% of the board will be new in December. They're going to have opinions, and the cynical part of me says, "This is all going to start all over again." So I would say, the board needs to make a decision and move on. Make a choice and get going, because it's clear, 10 years is too long, 20 years is twice as long, and leaders have to lead. So quit doing this and start making decisions. What's the timeframe now? Okay, you said there's one more meeting?
Monday.
Monday? And then we have a new board? And then when do we break ground? What's best-case scenario? When do you think we can break ground? On something. A, B, C, M, N, P, Q, whatever. When can we break ground?
We asked that question, sir, of Marlene, the architect, and she did indicate that if the program phase, which would come after you indicate what amenities you want, it could be as fast as one year, but she was very cautious on that. I'm just telling you what she gave us as a reference point.
Time is money.
Yeah, it is.
You need to act.
Do we have somebody else with a microphone?
I have a comment right here.
My name's Gary Ozier. My number is 109025. I used to be on the Long Range Planning Committee. And we developed a lot of data, or attempted to amass a bunch of data. It was a struggle sometimes. The SAC committee gathered a ton of data. And on my own, I took it upon myself to put together a utilization analysis for the activities that go on at Mountain View. It's too long to read, and I've got appendices to back it all up. If anybody wants to see it, let me know. I'd be glad to pass it along. But it's data-driven. It has nothing to do with, because I have no ox to be gored, okay? Here. So the other comment I have is with regard to the goals statement you made way early on. Are there going to be objectives and actual, you know, things to accomplish with dates, with people assigned? One last little thing. If anybody wants to know anything about retractable seating, I've done a ton of research on that. I've actually had the company come here and at Sundial. And here, we can get almost 400 seats. And they're not this. They're the good stuff. I mean, they're nice seats. The same for Sundial, we can get almost 600, just for reference.
Thank you. And Marlene also provided that. She suggested or gave us a picture of what retractable seats could look like, with our cushioned, comfortable, and rise up. Ballet Theater in Scottsdale, Gary says. Thank you. And next.
Hi, I'm Pat Seaborg. My number is 168448. And if you follow numbers, you know that I'm a pretty new person to the community. And I've always been involved in every community I lived in, so that's why I'm here at the meeting. I came here because I wanted to give some input and hoped that the board would consider just me as one person. But I think that a decision has to be made about the Performing Arts Center. A decision needs to be made about Mountain View. When I saw the mini golf here thing, when I was looking for a place to live, I was kind of appalled. But it's not anybody on the board's fault that it is the way it is now, because there's a long history behind that, I'm sure. I would like us to think about a couple of things, being that I don't have a second home. I live here year-round. And y'all know, any of you who are here in July and August this year, it was a new level of hot. I've had relatives in this area for over 20 years and can't remember it being this hot. And there's every reason to believe it's not going to be cooler this coming summer or the summers that followed. So as part of both the short-term plan in terms of the Mountain View facility and longer-range thinking, I want us to be thinking about recreational opportunities that can be done in climate-controlled conditions. I know from my history in working with healthcare, that people on medications, people who are elderly, we are the most vulnerable people when it comes to heat-related medical issues. So this is kind of one of my things that I'd like to have you consider. I don't know whether now is the time or Mountain View is the place to have indoor pickleball courts, but I think it's a pretty darn good idea. And as other people have said, "Well, maybe three years from now, pickleball won't be a thing." Well, maybe there'll be another sport that can be done indoors in a climate-controlled area, and you will have that area by agreeing to that. So again, I can't say when we schedule that, but please do think about physical recreation activities you can do when it's stinking hot, because I know in July, I was having a tough time with that. So that's my input, and I like pickleball. I love the performing arts. I hope we don't have to say you like one side or the other. I think we can have both.
Anybody else? Oh, back here, Dennis. Sir, we'll get to you. Yeah, go ahead, Dennis.
Kevin Christensen, 148928. I like a lot of things that have been said here tonight. I keep looking back to what could this place look like, rather than having arguments about different things, what the end result could be if we just allow ourselves to get to that point. I'm not trying to pick one over another, but after giving it a decent amount of thought, I think that if we walked into this place and something we could be proud of and has a little bit of wow factor, it makes a lot of sense to me to put that fitness center where they talked about. But I don't think it needs to be as huge as some of them are talking about. It's just the size of Marionette, that'd be fine. I think the theater then, in this area, might have to pare down a little bit, because I don't know what all the costs are. But I just imagine walking in, and there's a nice fitness center, there's a nice theater, and right in front of me is the best pool in Sun City. And then I look off to the left, and it's all the golf and all the other things that we have here, all hopefully getting refurbished so that they, I don't know, meet some kind of a standard for Sun City. But I just, I always, I come back to that, when it's done, how should we feel about this place? And I think that a theater, a fitness center, and a beautiful pool is a great place to start. You refurbish what we have, you can extend out pickleball so they have more. The one thing I do think, I know now you'd be probably looking at money, you know, how are we going to play, or excuse me, afford more than that? I don't mind the idea of putting an outdoors, or excuse me, an indoor pickleball. But I would like to see us move forward on this, get going, and if we can take two years to get the PIF built back up, and at that point, take a serious look at an indoor pickleball court. Because now that gives you two years to plan it, while this is all being built, you can be doing some behind-the-scenes things to get ready for all of that. And that gives you a couple of years at least to get some money built up into that PIF. And I think that would be the time then to put in an indoor pickleball. And this, Mountain View could be the nicest place here. This could be as nice as any place here, but you can't have it all. But I think you could delay some of it a couple of years, and it kind of makes sense to me to do it that way.
Thank you.
Jim Stewart, 14392. There's two seasons in Sun City, and this lady elaborated about the summer season. But the winter season, you know, the people in here in the summertime says it's, the streets are dead, just nobody moving. In the wintertime, it's active. And I like to play miniature golf, for example. The numbers for Mountain View and miniature golf are pathetic. But Joe Public can come in here and play miniature golf anytime he wants, as long as the gates out on the street are open. Nobody monitors and checks numbers. The same goes with Sundial. I'm disappointed with that. We like to miniature golf at any of them, and this was good until we didn't have even carpet. And we'd put up with it, because we could walk here. Walking is the number-one thing people like to do. We'd walk to the fitness center to get the exercise. We'd enjoy the camaraderie of miniature golf, and we've tried other sports, activities, and so on. The other point I want to make is, when I go up to Bell and play miniature golf, it's open until 9 o'clock. I come down here, and it's dead, because we lock up at 7:00. And in the wintertime, in that high season for use, we close early. We could get a lot more use out of the same equipment we've got by expanding our hours a little bit. And especially in the wintertime for these activities that are miniature golf, lawn bowling, so on. I don't know how many lawn bowlers would want to be out in the evening, but it's a high time for people to be out here in the wintertime when it cools down. We're being ushered off, and the sun's still up.
Thank you.
First-time comments, first-time comments.
Any other first-time comments? Anybody raise your hand? We have one back here.
Good evening. Lori Ellingson, 133335. I am supporting Plan C that you have up on the diagram. I think it's a win-win-win for all. There are lots of reasons for that. Number one, it's going to eliminate any parking issues based on usage, square feet, and ADA requirements. Number two, it's going to eliminate safety concerns, because if we do have the indoor facility for pickleball, less chance of heat stroke or other heat-related injuries. It also eliminates any issues with noise and lights, because being indoors, we would be able to stay open later and not affect any homes in the neighborhood. It also draws a wow factor and generates more interest in having retirees move here as opposed to having those looking for more affordable housing move here. It's also going to be more affordable in construction plans, because there's going to be less demolition, less need to put up lights and fencing, because it's already here. And it will also be a less maintenance. Several years ago, I talked to one of the employees that was doing maintenance on the lawn bowling green. He said to me, "If you knew how much money it costs for us to maintain this lawn bowling green, it would blow your mind." So if we do Plan C, we would save money on that expense. The other win-win-win factor, it's going to help us maintain the image of an active retirement community. So I hope everyone realizes that Plan C benefits every single club and helps with all of their needs. This is not Burger King, you can't have it your way.
Thank you. Ma'am, here. Lady in pink there?
Hi, I am Linda Van House, and I am a new permanent resident of Sun City. But you can tell by my number, 126451. I've been very active as a snowbird and a visitor when my parents lived here for 30 years. I am very much in agreement with the gentleman that said, "It is time to get going, no matter what." We've had all of these opinions, and every year when I come in the wintertime, I expect that Mountain View is going to be in process, and it still isn't. I agree with the fact that we have to have a certain plan, which, in my opinion, we do have one plan that was voted on. I've been to some of these meetings where they voted on the plans. It's already had, caught the budget effective to it, and I think it is time to stop getting opinions about what everybody wants, put it to the board, and get shovels in the ground. Thank you.
Steve, I got one.
Yes, my name is Lloyd Reiman, 159295. And I was wondering, you know, with this miniature golf, you say it's going to stay here, and why don't we put that carpet in right now? Because you're not going to break ground here for at least maybe two years. And we deserve that carpet put back in. You ripped it out. We don't care about the cost, because you waste more money on that on other sports that are not being used. This miniature golf is one of the most fun ones to play. You can ask a lot of people. So could you answer my question, why that carpet is not put back in?
It's been stated that they did not want to put it in and then have it ripped out six, nine months later, if construction could start that quickly. six, nine months later, if construction could start that quickly.
But you said that the miniature golf is staying.
That is correct.
So, why would you say they're going to take it back out? Would be planned for the next one or two years. And then if they want to cover it up with plastic, you're in construction. But you said that is staying. So, why would you say that, what you just said?
They were concerned about construction needing to use that area, construction equipment.
When they do construction. Come on, 10 years we've been waiting. And another thing about this pickleball, we never had fight to get this thing going. I think the pickleball's holding up what they want, what they need. Tennis, they played outside for 50 years here. We didn't need air conditioning or nothing. We need it maybe now. But like Kevin said, put that on hold, get this project going, come back, and we'll deal with that. The money's there. But, you know, the main thing is, get the carpet in there.
Thank you. Any other first-time comments? Anyone else with a comment?
I got one.
That hasn't spoken?
Oh.
In the back, or, and you have one here, Linda, next?
I got one right here. Go ahead.
I was going to sing to you. No. I've lived in Sun City now seven years. I've been hearing this going on for all that -- all -- like that? Okay, I've been here, listened to all this for seven years now. How much money so far has been spent on all your surveys in seven years? Half a million?
No, that's not correct. If you're talking about the ASU surveys, it wasn't anywhere close to that number. And previously, as we said, there wasn't any surveys for over 20 years.
Well, whatever you, you know, even if you had $400,000 for a survey and still nothing's done, why didn't they take that money and buy some property and put all the pickleball courts you want on it? They could have purchased the funeral home over there and all that land two years ago, and they did not. What's there now in a retirement center is a drug rehabilitation center on 107th and Peoria. What's the sense of that? I disagree with Plan C 100%. I'm a lawn bowler, I'm a golfer, and anything else I got time for. Lawn bowling, we have national champions here. We got people that just come back from Australia that live in Sun City with the world championships over there for lawn bowling. We got around 300 members, I was told. We got the best courts. We hold the U.S. Open here, which brings people from seven countries. And it'll probably be here again, because we have the best lawn bowling courts probably in the United States. So, I'd just like to see something start moving. I'm 80, and the thing is, I don't know how much time I got to wait.
Thank you. And we have one over here, Linda. Thank you.
Betty Colosi, 145721. I've worked in strategic planning and cost of things for several years, but in the healthcare industry. I went to the first town hall meeting, and we did not have this paper at that time. And there was a letter M and then a second option. And a lady spoke up there after listening to everybody and said that, "Why aren't you going with letter M?" I don't know who she was, but she had given some explanation in the beginning. And I just want to review here. With this paper, actually, A, B, and C will not work out from a strategic standpoint and a cost standpoint. B and C, they've got question marks after what they're going to do with the theater. Well, according to M, it's, what, 13.1 billion? Well, if you add that to the totals of B and C, they're more than the 25.2 that the architect said. And A, that would be, that's more to begin with, okay? Even though it's two properties. My feeling is, letter M is the best route to go, based on the fact that we had it professionally evaluated. My understanding is the budget that has been approved and is allowed is 27 million, so it's within budget. And although pickleball and PAC don't get everything they wanted, there is something here for them and for everybody else. And I'm wondering, why wouldn't you prioritize putting additional things in your five-year plan for the PAC and the pickleball, so that you start here and eventually get to whatever they want in letter C for pickleball and the PAC? At least you'd have a basis in letter M, within budget, professionally done, and you'd satisfy getting all of the people going on the project. I vote for letter M.
We have someone back here? Dennis? Okay.
We're done with all the first-timers?
No, I got a first-timer.
First-timer.
I'm Dave Clausen, 154961. I was privileged to be part of the SAC for the summer, and it was an interesting experience. I want to say, first of all, I respect everybody that was part of that process, and I want to thank the board members who set that up and put a hold on option two, which was 47 million, and wasn't fully thought out. And I think we've got input here. So, what I want to say is that these town hall meetings have provided input to the board. Now, it was not absolutely clear to the SAC members when we started what exactly our role was. We thought that we were to come up with a plan, an alternative or alternatives to present and recommend to the board. But it was clear that we did not make the decision. It was going to be the RCSC Board of Directors who would take our recommendation and all this great input on opposing sides and with passion. And then they would make a decision, and it would be part of board, normal board meetings and discussion and votes. Now, the fact of the matter is that I think in RCSC boards, they have nine members and five votes for would pass. Am I not correct? So, it's not a consensus. It doesn't have to be nine versus zero, but it's going to be a five versus four. So, this has been very good. And I want to say, I support Plan M, because it also includes pickleball. We, I am the president of the tennis club, and so I was part of that, and I gave up. I mean, we have interest in tennis courts, and I don't want to have to necessarily drive 15 minutes away. Yes, only seven miles, agree. It's not far, but that's 15 minutes each way, each day. My wife just picked up tennis, and I played with her here before she starts work or during her lunch hour. I cannot do that out there. But we gave that up, because pickleball is up and coming. It's important. And I do, I do support indoor pickleball. We love tennis indoor, too, have to say, have to say, because we play during the summers. We're called the Lizards. We play at 7:00 in the morning till we get so hot, we have to leave. Anyway, so I support M, and I think it can accommodate pickleball, and we'll look at finding ways to cover it. Yeah.
Thanks, Dave. Any other first comments coming up against our timeline? Any last first comments? Back in the back there?
Hi, I'm Alice Krenko, number 53266. We've lived here or had a house for 15 years, and we're kind of snowbirds as well. But we're over more at Fairway area, so I love that pool. But I'm here during the day, because I feel, this is like a resort when I come here. The palm trees, you're outside, you got the big pool. But it's really embarrassing and very frustrating to bring my friends here or family and say, "Oh, come to Mountain View, it's so pretty." No, we can't play the putt-putt, because it's been down for a couple of years, or it's had ripped carpeting. Or we can't go in the sauna, because that's been closed. And we could work out at the equipment, but it's really outdated. Come on. It really is frustrating. The average age of all of us, I hear, is 74. My dad moved here in 70, in 1974. He was an old-timer here, but passed away. I had two sisters and a brother pass away. I mean, how long are we going to be waiting to redo something? We need to, like these people said, we need to get that shovel in the ground. We need to do something. We need to maybe do that putt-putt course, so it's usable, it's friendly, it can be fun for a year or two or whatever. We were promised this area to be redone after Fairway. Fairway's been done now for several years, and these people have been waiting for this theater to be done. Nothing's done. And now we have more things that are not done. How are we going to compete with the other? I mean, we were the first, what, 63 years ago or 65? Now, we have over 15-plus, 55 places that you could go. And we are just not competing. We can't get young people here. Our house is valued. We really need to get going. And I agree with these people over here. M seems to be an excellent choice. I went to the meeting at Fairway, what, your last two meetings, I'll go, I guess. But really, it's sad. It really is. And it's embarrassing. And I love it here. It's great. But we really need to do something and be active. So, thank you so much for all the work you've done.
Thank you. All right, folks. I think we have reached our 8 o'clock limit here, and we tried to get to as many comments as we possibly could. I think that it'd be good for us to consider the positives here. We talked about performing arts. We talked about pickleball. We talked about what stays, what is consistent in multiple plans. I think that we have talked about how much information is out there and how it's recorded, and you can go over it and review it. So, from a standpoint of our board providing us a lot of information, hopefully you feel that we are giving you a lot of information and feedback.
Our next opportunity is Monday, from noon to 2:00 at Lakeview. We hope to see you there.